Actually, his is okay. I'll call a meeting to order of the Federal Way City Council for June 18th of 2024. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. We've got a big council meeting. It's great to see so many people here on a June evening. We have three of our council members that are attending remotely. They are at the Association of Washington Cities. And if you hear me speaking a little bit fast during the course, faster than like normal, it's because several of our members on the dais are going to be headed to where our other three council members are, and that's down in Vancouver for the Association of Washington Cities annual meeting. And so that is council members Honda and council member McDaniel, council member Lydia Sefad Dawson are remotely. It just happens to be all on that side of the dais. So with that, why don't we, but they'll be participating remotely as well. So hopefully, we'll be able to get our business done efficiently and get our council members on the road to the annual meeting. With that, we have got a very special presentation this evening. We have our presiding judge, Judge Larson, and Judge Bales, and Cassie Swan with our Parks Department for the Municipal Court Student Art Show Recognition. Cassie?
Good evening, Mayor Farrell and council. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. I have the good fortune of doing a lot of fun things in my job, and this one is really a highlight for me and I think many of us throughout the year. I would like to bring up our chair for the Arts Commission, Vicky Chinowith, as well as Karen Brigado, our vice chair, who would like to say a few words about this art contest while I pull up the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members and audience. On behalf of the Federal Way Arts Commission, this is one of our favorite things that we do each year, and that's with Judge Larson's What Liberty Means to Me. And the students that participate in this program or this art contest, it's not really an arts contest because all of the students do very well. The art is just phenomenal. So we do want to thank, thank, thank you for letting us do the presentation tonight. And at this moment, I would like to introduce Judge Larson and let him talk about his program.
All right. Your honors.
I'll keep it brief. If you believe me, I got a bridge to say. No, thank you again. This is, I think, our 16th, 16th year of doing this since 2009. So we were talking in the room back here, and some of the students, some of the students that won the original year now have families and are almost 30 years old. So it's been around a while. So, and I very much appreciate your support over the years for that. And Judge Bales and I are going to pass out the awards tonight. And so when you hear your name, and Cassie, are these in the right order? Oh, there you are.
Let's go through the slideshow as we...
Oh, the slideshow.
As, I mean...
I will, I will stand corrected and stand over here.
Okay, so I do believe most of our artists who placed, there is a first, second, and third place for elementary and middle school. And I believe most everyone is here. All right, first up from second grade, first place elementary school, we have Sahaj Negra. If you could please come on up. This is her piece titled Social Justice. And Sahaj, this is your second year with us, correct? If you wouldn't mind just staying right up here, Sahaj. Second place, we have Ananya Khan from second grade for second place. This is titled Freedom to Choose. And third place, we have Nora Hickey, and she's in third grade. This one's titled Tiles of Words. And then from middle school, we have, and justice for all, and this is Lily Young. I don't believe Lily made it tonight. And then we have second place, Olivia Morrow, and this is Speech Bubble. And then just to quickly show you, we had a lot of really great artwork come through. Daniel Ha, seventh grade, Miriam Karpinska, I believe Miriam is here. Is that right? Yes, Miriam, come on up. And we have Faith Phillips, fourth grade. Lilia Konenko, Anna Yaramchuk, Louis Romo. Violetta Allison Sophia. Camilla Vlad Vlasov.
That's great.
Yeah. So thank you for this opportunity to share this really great program that Judge Larson started long ago. It's really great to see all the kids' artwork and what liberty means to me. And if we have just a quick moment, would we be able to stand in front of the dais for a photo?
Sure, real quick, can you tell us what schools they're from?
Oh, yeah. Would you like to each speak up and say which school you're from? Really loud.
Lake Grove. Kylo. St. Vincent de Paul. Meredith Hill.
Very good. Now, the most important part is parents. As we get, we're going to, we're going to have the students and the judges and Cassie move over here. But parents, feel free to roam around, get close, you get just the right shot. So don't be bashful about getting that, getting that shot.
And the Arts Commission.
And the Arts Commission. Come on up, you guys. And then we'll stand behind them.
Need to come down with it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Here we go. Yeah, I think they need to come this way. We need to come, yeah. There we go. I didn't realize, how tall are you? Okay, here we go. All right, well, congratulations, every...
Thank you.
Congratulations, students.
Thank you, Ananya.
These shoes are pushing me over six feet.
I think you're right. I think you're right. And that, your honors, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Thank you for the work you do. Well, congratulations to our students. Great job. And parents, thank you so much for being here and for nurturing this artistic endeavor. Okay, are you ready, David?
Yeah, give me just two seconds here. Just trying to make sure it's all teed up, ready to go. Did you get this? Where's it? Oh, right there. Okay, there we go. That's why I couldn't figure it out. Okay, there we go.
Okay, great. Now, for the next part, the mayor's emerging issues in report. We've got the July 4th Red, White, and Blues Festival at Celebration Park. Gates open at four, but I don't want to step on our illustrious Parks Director, John Hutton. John, give us your best report on our July 4th festivities.
I don't know how illustrious I am, but good evening, Mayor, Council President and City Council. Just want to invite the entire public out for our 29th Annual Red, White, and Blues Festival. Ironically, this is the 25th year at Celebration Park. So it's a big year. It is a great festival. As the mayor said, it starts at four o'clock. It is free. We would love to see you out there. We have great music, only music this year. We're very, very excited about it. We have great food, great kids' activities, fun for the whole family. Arts Commission, Parks Commission, police, fire, we have great partnerships across the board. And it is the biggest event in the city of Federal Way every year, and we would love to have you there. So just a big welcome, and we'd love to see you out there.
20,000 of our closest friends.
Absolutely, and we got room for more.
That's right. You guys, every year, usually early in the spring, John will come to me and he goes, "We've got to pick out the music for the fireworks." And so Pam is usually on the other side of the closed door, and loud music prevails, and then John and I hammer out the soundtrack for the fireworks. So let us know what you think, and it's always a lot of fun. But I do ask, you know, and every year, so next year, let me know what kind of firework, what kind of music you'd like to see. And because it's, you know, I normally ask many people, what kind of music would you like to hear? And it's a great event. We've got the bouncy house. I'm not painting my face this year. It's not happening. And it's just a great time to get together. So it'll start to get warmed up at four. Fireworks at...
10:15, exactly.
Right. And do we have the bagpipe guy? Is he coming?
We have, the bagpipe guy is confirmed. Absolutely.
Now, what we mean by that is when the lights go out and right before the fireworks go, our National Anthem is played on bagpipes.
Absolutely.
So that's kind of fun. So any, any questions, council, about July 4th? Okay, all right, all right. I'll hurry. All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see here. And thanks, we've had a really busy spring and now early summer. We had, we had folks come from the internet, the Seattle International Film Festival. That's that picture on the far left. And that's referred to as CIF. That's a great regional organization that they wanted to see and wanted to take a look at the Performing Arts and Events Center. We also took them down to Knutson Family Theater down at Dumas Bay. They, they may be showing some parts of CIF here in Federal Way. And that's a really cool thing. This has been ongoing for quite a number of years. It's a, it's a national festival. I remember seeing David Lynch in the Seattle Film, Seattle International Film Festival 20 years ago. And so before we had Benjamin, I got dragged to a lot of foreign films. Not for a long time. All right, so it'd be fun to have them here. Then the next picture is the Seattle, excuse me, the synchronized swimming event for the, was it the Young Olympian, Young Olympics or Junior Olympics? They were literally at our, at our community center and at the pool there. You could see all the parents, and they put on a tremendous show. That was on June 8th. Then we went over to the Barker Cabin and the David Denny Cabin right there on 348th. And Historical Society does a great job. They actually had somebody, Jerry Knutson, actually, we happened to run into he and his wife, along with an individual that's working, or I think his name was Anthony, talking about the Barker Cabin and the history that is, that's associated with those two historic cabins. Then we had the Starry, Starry Night. I see Cheryl Hurst in the audience. She did just such a, she and her entire team and all the volunteers put on a fabulous event and hopefully raised a lot of money, and it was absolutely a really nice evening. John, the community center did a great job. It was absolutely, the place looked great, and yeah, it was really nice. And that was also June 8th. So you could see, we had quite a number of events on one day. Then we had the Fusion ribbon cutting for a transitional housing right there off 308th off Dash Point Road. And it was astounding. We have such a generous community. Fusion has been working with quite a number of different, Fusion is an organization that was really built here in Federal Way. They do such great work. And they, they had to remodel this house, they had to spend, it was going to be about a $300,000 project, but you have so many vendors from roofers and plumbers and people doing siding in the garage. They only, I think they had about, was it $120,000 worth of material? No, it was, it was $250,000, thank you, that had been donated, you know, through the, what was the name of the housing company?
Lennar?
Yeah, Lennar. Thank you very much. Lennar. And Lennar, thank you very much. Lennar did just, did such a great job, and their, their CEO, Salverson, what's his first name? Anyway, it was absolutely fantastic to see that. It's going to be transitional housing for a year, and it was, it was a great event. So let's go to the next. All right, then also, we had the Harborstone Credit Union. That's at the mall, right next to Dick's, just south of Dick's, fronting 320th, excuse me, fronting Pack Highway. That's that picture on the far left. Then we had the Korean Quarterly Meeting on that same day, June 13th. This past Saturday, we had the Seroptimus Flag Day, this, just this past Saturday on June 15th, and like to thank the Seroptimus and the Lions. They were absolutely fantastic there, and it was a great opportunity. We, John, thank you very much for getting those flags raised along 348th. And it was a great opportunity to talk about the history of flag raising and Flag Day. Let's see here. Then we had, let's see here, then we had the South King Fire 75th Anniversary Open House, 75 years, and they did a great job there on First Avenue. It was also on Saturday. You could see these days have been very filled. We go one, from one event to another. Game of Life and Phenomenal She put on a great Juneteenth event at Town Square Park on June 15th, and it was great to see the dancers and the speakers, and I was honored to be there. And then we had, just today, you've got a picture of the Juneteenth Flag Raising today, Tuesday, June 18th at noon here at City Hall. The flag will be up for a week, and it was a really, we had the president of the state NAACP, we had Trinise Rogers and her, whose daughter had suggested this, and he gave a great poem. And then we had our state, two of our state representatives spoke, our state senator was there. We had Maisha Barnett, a descendant of the Connor family, and we announced that we're working on naming a city park, the Olderbrook Park. We're going through the process to rename Olderbrook Park in honor of John and Mary Connor and the Connor family and their legacy in our community. And that's right around where that is. Our Diversity Commission Chair, Sadia Abdullah, gave greasy, Sadia, good evening, and she gave great remarks. Everybody who came up to the podium was absolutely fantastic. We raised the flag, and it was really a beautiful event. We had some regional media. All right, next. All right, so City Hall will be closed tomorrow in recognition of the state holiday of Juneteenth. Then we'll have on this Saturday, the first annual, these are upcoming events now, First Annual Summer Fest at our Rota Dender Garden on June 22nd at 10 a.m. The Federal Way Lions Club Music Festival will be at Steel Lake Park also on Saturday at 3 p.m. And it's going to be a busy, busy Saturday again. And then I want to let you know, your council and they're really, shows up to all these and then shows up at the, at the market, and they're hardworking and as, as are many of our commissioners and volunteers in our community. Then we've got the Miles for MISO on July 4th. That, I think they start the race at nine, but you better get there a little bit early. And that's a great event to raise money for mesothelioma. Let's see here, okay, next? Okay, that is my report, and a lot going on, and just like to thank all the staff for all their work, and David, who went with me in every one of those events. So thank you, David.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, now, the most important part of the evening is to hear from our public that we work for. That's you, and I've got some pink sheets. Now, remember, council has asked, we don't need to know your address, just tell us the community you live in. If it's Federal Way, that's great. If it's somewhere else, that's great, too. Green means go. You've got three minutes. Yellow means you've got about 30 seconds, and red means please stop. I don't like to interrupt people. And we all know the rules in regard to, you know, how we conduct ourselves. With that, why don't I, I'll read off a few folks, and we could queue up and get started. Okay, so the first will be George Bannon, then Barb Staub, Mary Ellis, Ken Blevins, Cheryl Hurst, Betty Taylor, Jan Barber, Anna Patrick, Jeremy Winter, Craig Patrick. Okay, that's what I've got so far. With that, George, George Bannon.
Good evening, everybody. I'm not a speaker, so I'm going to have to read this, and I hope it makes sense. Dear members, thank you for allowing me to talk tonight. I do what I do because I saw two people on the same day, one eating out of a dumpster and another eating out of a garbage can. I said, "Not in America." So I feed them, I talk to them, I even hug them. They do not deserve our hate. Some of the garbage that's out there on the street, it's not all from the homeless. I have seen cars drive by where the homeless are and throw trash bags out their window. I have seen it, and I wouldn't lie to you. Some of the shopping carts you see filled with garbage. It's the homeless picking up after the other homeless. I've seen them do it. Stand up, Federal Way. I know how you are. You want to clean the city, and so do I, but we got to do it with a heart. You know, you can't say in one meeting that, oh, they're scum, and then in another meeting, "Oh, I have, I have compassion for them." It's either one or the other. They are all not drug addicts. Some of them became addicted when they lost their houses over some, something. Some are homeless because of greed of others, like rent. And when I missed the second meeting, I tried to be here, but the first thing I heard when I came in was the cost of rent and housing, and we might have more homeless. How can we do that? We got to put a stop somehow, us as a group, every one of us, even if you hate the homeless or if you don't, we all got to do something. We got, Mr. Devi made a comment at the first meeting. Why keep on talking about it? Let's do something. I got a list of churches here that they meet and they talk about going to homeless. There's, there's 20, 23 people. Okay, let me go on. Well, I don't want to get cut off, but what's going on now is there's groups of kids driving around in cars and beating the homeless and kicking them with, beating them with baseball bats. And I got proof, one showed me the staples in his head. So Mr. Police Officer Chief, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but if we could watch out for the homeless, they don't be, deserve to be treated like animals.
Thanks, George. Barb Staub.
Good evening, Mayor, and everybody attending. My name is Barb Staub. I live at the very north end of Federal Way. Been here about 28 years, transplant from the Midwest. I love Federal Way, and I have all plans to live here till I die. I love this community. I am concerned about the noise pollution that we're suffering from, though. I live under the flight path of the airport, and I accept that. You know, the, the noise has gotten a lot worse in the years I've lived there because of the expansion and the third runway getting added and all that. But there's some kinds of noise that really don't have to exist that we're all dealing with, and my neighbors are all concerned about this as well. One thing is fireworks problem. You know, 4th of July, that's one thing. But where I live, it's happening all around, all year round. And it's very loud. Sometimes on a Saturday night, it'll go on for a couple hours. That's usually in the summer. But then in the fall and into the winter, we'll get the, every time the Seahawks make a touchdown, they'll be a celebratory event. And I, I'm a dog lover, so I always have dogs, and it's a horrible event in my house because the dog freaks out, and then my whole evening is completely ruined. The vet has given him pills. We've tried that. They either make him sicker or they don't work, so. Fireworks are getting under my, my skin. Also, the street racing, Friday and Saturday nights are my least favorite nights of the week because the noise comes up from Pack Highway, and it is very disruptive. I like, used to like to sit in my backyard under my apple tree, but I don't enjoy that anymore because of the noise. Exhaust pipes, you know, I understand kids want to have fun, and cars are awesome. You know, a loud muffler is one thing, but there's more than that going on. It's just a definite, I think, endeavor to make a lot of noise is going on. So I know we have a lot of bigger problems. The homeless is a major concern of mine, too. We do have big problems in this community besides this smaller one that I'm talking about, but quality of life is important, and our quality of life is suffering because of things like these. I don't know what can be done. I can't do anything because I don't know where, who's doing it. I don't know where they live, and I would be cautious about saying anything. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Barb, when we get done with the meeting, I'll talk to, I'll have the chief talk about loud mufflers and racing and that kind of thing. So I'll stick around. I'll ask him when the meeting, when the meeting's over. Okay, Mary Ellis.
Hi. I'm Mary Ellis, and I am the president of the Historical Society, and the mayor gave you some fun things to do, and we're going to give you even more. And I'm glad you enjoyed the cabins. The cabins are at Hylobos Park, and the Barker Cabin is the oldest structure here in Federal Way, and it represents what it was like to live here at that time, Denny Cabin. It represents the business and the schools of that time. So please come over on the second Saturday between 11 to 3:00. They're open. If we get more volunteers, we'll be open more Saturdays. So if you're interested, come on out. Also, the Heritage Center, which is at Steel Lake Park on 312th. We have, well, on the end of the month, actually, I'll start with the 23rd, because we'll have storytelling coming up. So when you see a 30-foot salmon, colorful tent out on the lawn, it means storytelling's going on, and that's one of our goals, to collect the stories. History is about the stories. And we'll also have our open house on the 29th between 1:00 and 4:00. So come on over and look and see what we're doing. And one of the things we're doing is representing the fun things you should not miss in Federal Way. So we've got the model of Celebration Park, we have the King County Aquatic Center, and we have the Community Center in the pack, and they'll all be represented from how they all came about. So come on over and see what we're doing. We'll be building on that as we go, but we'll be representing all of that. So, and also, on the third Saturday, we'll have, Crazy Coasters are going to be there because that's part of how you amused yourself back then when you didn't have cell phones and all. Not just amused yourself, but put some bedding on the beds. So they're going to be there and show us what they do, and we always include an activity for the kids. So bring the grandkids, bring the kids, so they'll have an opportunity to do something as well. as well. We'll have storytelling again and it'll always be Sunday, 1:30 to 3:30, and that'll be July 21st. And we are looking at doing a vintage fair again. We do not sell anything that is the property of the Historical Society, we invite people in. So, you have to come look at that. The Blue Heron Canaan, canoe group will be with us in August and they are, they're gonna talk to us about natives, what, what they ate around us, what the native plants are and we'll do storytelling again. And plus, we'll be at as many community events as we can get people out to. So, if you like these things, come join us because we can do even more if we get some help. So, thanks a lot, come join us.
Great, thank you, Mary. Ken Blevins.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Ken Blevins, Federway citizen, fifty-two years and going. Well, I had, it's kind of the same subject, but I had to change my remarks a little bit to answer to the gentleman that was up here that said that stand-up Federway is heartless, doesn't care about them or hates the homeless. I started stand-up Federway with a large group of citizens that wanted to help the homeless drug addicts. And I don't call them homeless alone because there are women and children out there that don't have housing. And instead of housing the women and children in Federway, we're gonna house middle-aged men from twenty to forty years old over here in a hotel, not give them treatment for the addiction that they're on that's causing their homelessness. And that's not humane, okay? There's a lot of children in this school district that are homeless, we're not helping them. We're, we're helping house addicts so we can hide them, so they're not in public. We started by going into the encampments. And I say again, they're addicts, it's not to disparage them at all, it's to bring out and light what they're going through. They're human beings, they have families that are waiting for them, that don't see them ever, that are scared for them. These people have PTSD because they're in these encampments or out on the street because they're put there and they're not being helped. There's billions of dollars that is being spent on homelessness and it's being wasted because people are making money on it and they want to continue this, the system that's going on. We could end homeless drug addiction in ten years, end it, if we focused on addiction. And then we can focus on homelessness in itself by housing people that are not addicted, housing people that are addicted in a whole different facility so we can help them out long-term, get them back into society. I've seen women die, I've seen them come out of these encampments raped, assaulted. And so, yeah, we care about them, we care about them a lot, but we care about them enough because we know that the, our state representatives are supposed to represent Federway, have regionalized homelessness, and they send addicts to our city that our police department is doing such an amazing job the last couple of years. The mayor's really just put together a team focused on this thing. We're not getting any kind of funding for this, we're not getting any funding for the addicts that come to that hotel and come out and steal from all the people and leave their garbage. And yes, they steal those carts, they're not cleaning up after other people, they're stealing from other homeless drug addicts, okay? They're not cleaning up after them. They, they're high, they're in fentanyl, right? That's, that's fentanyl. When you see someone that's hunched over, that's fentanyl. These people are dying every day. And so, they're taking stuff out of their cart, putting it down, they forgot that they put it down and don't pick it back up. We need to help these people out, we need to vote people in at the state level that do what is best for Federway, not the people that are currently there. Christine Reeves, Jamila Taylor and Claire Wilson are hurting Federway. So, come check us out, I'd love to meet you, come to a meeting, I don't think I've seen you there, but I'd love to meet you and, and maybe we can do something together. Thanks.
Cheryl Hurst.
Mayor, City Council, people in, on video and people out here. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mayor Feller has a discretionary fund to do events here and I dropped off my piece of paper and I didn't get but five blocks from, from City Hall and, and his lovely secretary and best person ever, Pam calls me and says, "We just wanted to let you know we're, we're sponsoring your gala." And it's, it's been ten years of providing diapers and wipes to, from anywhere, from five to twenty nonprofits. But at this point now, we have a diaper bank, started February 1st and, you know, and to fund that, you kind of have to do a gala because you have to start paying somebody to run that. So, we were extremely grateful to get the sponsorship, it really, it basically evened your sponsorship and a couple other sponsorships evened out what our costs were. And so, we actually, just slightly over forty thousand dollars and we were astounded and amazed, we were like gonna be happy if we made anything over fifteen or twenty. So, it, it says a lot about Federway, it says a lot about, you know, for all the warts and flaws that this place has. And I don't physically, actually, no, I don't physically live anywhere here, but I lived in unincorporated King County and I was basically kind of adopted by Federway. And so, probably my last city council meeting, I'm moving out of state, still president of the nonprofit, which is called Do the Right Thing. So, you have to remember, sometimes everything isn't perfect, but there's still a lot of really great people out there and there's still a lot of people that care. And sometimes, we misunderstand what people are trying to do or what they're trying to think and sometimes it's just nice to go meet people with coffee or, you know, go take somebody to lunch or some, and learn a bit more about what's going on in the city. People said to me, "How do you know so much about a city you don't live in?" I said, "Because when you live somewhere where there's no connection to anything, you gravitate to somewhere where there is a connection." So, for those of you who live in Federway and say, "Hey, you know, I don't know what to do" or "I'm bored" or "I literally don't know anything," you come to a city council meeting, you come to coffee, you join a service club group or anything like that, you know, you get a chance to learn that, you know, for everything that's wrong with the city, there's, there's a lot right. So, I told myself I wasn't gonna get emotional, as you can see, I'm kind of on the edge, but I just want to say thank you for everything, you guys. And like I tell everybody, I'm not dead, I will be back, I will be rising indeed, but just not as regularly. So, thank you for everything and I really appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl, thank you for everything you've done and this is how I feel.
Thank you, Cheryl, for all your years of faith in our community and helping out people and, and especially those little ones with the diapers, thank you so much. Okay, Betty Taylor.
My name is Betty Taylor. There's a Federway officer that I feel have gone, has gone beyond the duty as an officer and has played a great role in my family's life. And I would like to honor this one particular officer. It's a sheep, I don't know who she is, I don't even know her name. I think she was the first Federway officer on the scene at the, at the Law Family Restaurant. And it was so unexpected, she was just driving down the street and as she drove down the street, she seen all this commotion, she stopped her car. She had only been on the job for six months, six months, and yet she saw a need and she stopped to give aid to other, to, to families. And we were so impressed, we heard this during the trial, we heard at least five officers testified that they were on the scene. Well, we didn't even know they were from Federway, but these were about five police officers in the city of Federway. I just thought that the Maurens just showed up in Kent, but the call went out to all jurisdiction and they all showed up. I mean, this was a mass tragedy. And to see on video, as we, as we're in court, to see so many agencies show up to aid, I would really love this one officer to be especially recognized, but I don't know her name. But she had been on the job for six months, but during the line of duty, she was just coming to work. She didn't know about no shootings, she was just driving down the street, but she seen what happened and she stopped her car and she got out of her car. I don't know how we could make this happen, but it's stuff like that that really touches my heart. It touched my heart. We're not through a third year, but something like that, to hear something like that from an officer, it, it made such an impact, it made such an impact, made such an impact. There also was another officer in the city of Kent that came to my grandson's aid as he was bleeding from the brain. The officer had a, had a gauze, the officer took the gauze and wrapped it around his bleeding head and held him. That makes a difference. To us, to people going through something like that, that's life-saving. He wasn't thinking about himself, but he was thinking about those that were in danger. He came to the scene. We are testimony after testimony after testimony, but I'm gonna stop right here because I got more, but I'm gonna stop right here. But we need to honor those that take the time to comfort us.
Thank you, Betty. Jan Barber.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and members of the public. Many of you are my neighbors. My name is Jan Barber, I've lived in Federway for more than fifteen years. Sometimes, there isn't, there aren't the right words to say in the face of all of the different things we've heard today, but I'd like to suggest that music can build community. I am talking about the sixth annual music festival that's gonna take place at Steel Lake Park, presented by the Federway Lions and thank you with cooperation and support from the council, from the mayor and from the, the Federway Arts Commission. We are inviting everyone to this free event. We're going to have a big band, twenty-piece swing band that's gonna be doing Tuxedo Junction and several other, from that era. That will be at between six and seven. And from five to six, you're gonna hear the Coal Creek Jazz Band, a nine-piece group. And our friend Christopher Stone as a banjo player is in that. The, the first band to play will be the Skip Dirks Tribute Band in honor of a member, the lead guitarist in my band who, who passed away, who performed at the Performing Arts Center on June 1st and passed away on June 4th unexpectedly. We're going to have, most of all, I'd like to share something about a group that's coming, the Washington Diamond Drill Team. We've had them almost continually for the six years since we started. It was founded by Fawn Sterling, who wanted to give inner-city girls and boys a chance to perform. They have won awards. Lately, they've been at the Seattle Torch, Torchlight Festival and they will be coming to perform for us again. I want to share that when the, the kids' grades drop, Fawn sits down with them and works out a plan and helps them get back on, on track. Sometimes musicians can do something to help build community and I appreciate the support that people have shared. Come on down, June 22nd.
Thanks, Jan, we'll see you Saturday. Anna Patrick.
Mayor and Council, I am here to speak as a resident of Federway on behalf of our community. And related to housing, conversations are always coming up now. I think it's really important that we are as intentional as we can possibly be, this is a really golden opportunity now with the whole region planning and thinking about the outcomes of housing and long-term social impacts. And I'd just like to, I know I keep bringing this up, but it's because we really need to be aware before we can, and think about stats and facts so that we can be intentional. And so, you know, I have this data that I pulled from the website, you know, we have the low-income housing, tax exemption housing, that's the fifty to eighty percent. And they say we have this certain amount, but really overlapping that is the housing vouchers. In South King County, the number of people total per hundred thousand with housing vouchers in 2019 was five thousand six hundred and forty-four in Federway, five thousand eight, five thousand eighty-four in Kent and five thousand one hundred and eleven in Tukwila. Those are the high flyers. Whereas if you look at cities like Bothell, Bellevue, Issaquah, Redmond, you'll see people on the waiting list trying to get into those cities. And really, I think this is something we need, our region leaders need to be thinking about, making sure that everybody's taking on every need intentionally and in a fair way and sets every city up for success. So, when you overburden some cities and that's the plan and, and people don't look at these facts when they're planning certain housing brackets, I don't know where the nine hundred and forty housing units of permanent supportive housing comes from that they're dishing out to our city. But I would bet that some of the in-home care facilities are already kind of taking up some of that need. I really want the city to look at that and also look at planning, treating those as if they are permanent, permanent supportive housing units in, in the way of our code and making sure that we're, some of, some of these facilities are being offered large dollar amounts of money to take on severe mental illness. So, some people are gonna look at that and go, "Yeah, that sounds great, I don't really have to be there to deal with that." So, hey, not my problem. So, this is the kind of stuff we need to look at, so I implore the city to do so. Thank you.
Thanks, Anna. Jeremy Winter.
First of all, it's Windsor, my fault.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's all right, I, I wrote it fast, so, so don't worry about it. One, for everybody who hasn't seen me here for a while, I definitely apologize. I honestly wasn't even gonna make it today because I ha, I have to run, but I'm happy to be back. It's always good to be in you guys' presence, understanding what you guys' fight is in the city. I do live in Federway, but I'm not always able to come to meetings because I'm actually out there really doing the work. I currently am here to advocate, like I always said, I'm here not speaking on my own behalf, I speak for the youth every time I'm up here, anytime I can, that's who I advocate for. I'm one of their voices and I'm always gonna be one of their voices. I actually have an event that I want to talk about. Normally, I don't even have nothing, I, I wait, I always put my, my thing in last where I can get the information and come up here and address whenever I felt like the, the youth would address because they're not present. But Friday, we have a civic engagement here, talking about some of that stuff that you guys are talking about, these Todd Beamer students, right, that have been in a credible messenger training for three cohorts are coming to present on Friday from five to eight PM right here. So, please come, I, I would love for anybody and all you guys to be here to get some of the information you guys are asking about now. We have gang violence, we have a topic on drugs in, in the youth perspective and it's supposed to be all based around Federway. Anna, I would have loved to talk to you before this because you seem to always have a lot of stats. We couldn't find a lot of Federway stats or even South King County, so a lot of their stuff is based around King County stats. I will say just off of, again, I, I, I always adjust what I'm gonna say when I, when I hear other people saying, I will say some of that homelessness talk, I promise you, isn't just drugs, isn't, I'm a military veteran, college educated and I work in community and currently right now, I'm getting rental assistance because finance and economics don't always lead up, right? There's a lot of systems forcing, like you said, there's a lot of reasons why things are a certain way and I don't just believe it's drugs. I don't believe everybody out there is on fentanyl, because I'm close to being homeless right now, a, as we speak. And trust me, again, I'm, I'm articulate, obviously, I come to city hall meetings, I have community connec- I have community connections. I speak to the governor, let alone the mayor of the city that I currently live in, and I still have those issues. So trust me, it's not just drugs and bad mistakes. It's sometimes life. Life can get on you. So just understand that. Like he said, have a heart when you come to any of this. Have a heart. And I'm not saying Stand Up for Federal Way doesn't. I appreciate you guys show up. And showing up is the first step to getting stuff done. And another thing I wanted to say, I go to the community center every day. We need more youth stuff in Federal Way. That's gonna, that's gonna change a lot of this stuff. I go to the community center every morning from 5:00, and we get kicked out at 7:00 because there's pickleball from 7:00 to 2:00. And it's summertime. These kids have nothing to do. And if, we're already charged to get in the community center, right? I understand it's a business. You guys taught me that. But at the same time, we gotta have stuff for them to do, to keep them out of trouble, to keep the loud noises down, to keep the homelessness from continuing to start. So thank you, guys. I hope to see you guys Friday.
Thank you, Jeremy. Hey, did you bring more of these? Did you bring more flyers?
I put a couple right there. We have a couple on the table. And we're also reaching out to see if we can have a practice thing on Thursday. So we gotta hold a Pam, a lovely Pam, so hopefully we can get back from.
I know, she's great.
For sure.
Okay, so Gradwell on the way out the door, you guys. It's right there. And it's in council chambers Friday, this Friday, the 21st at 5:00 p.m. So thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. And thank you for the work you do at Progress Pushers. All right, Craig Patrick.
Good evening. My name's Craig Patrick. I live in Federal Way. I've lived here for about 28 years. Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council. Thanks for giving me the time to speak. A couple weeks ago, I was contacted because there were some issues at St. Vincent's DePaul Parish, where I go to church. And up in the back parking lot, there was a lot of illegal activity going on. And St. Vincent's reached out to me and asked me if I could help facilitate some kind of remedy for this. So I talked to Kim Bowman at the church and Marty, and we talked to the SOU officers. And Chief Wong knows I'm here, so he thanked me for not being out committing crimes. So. So I want to say thank you to Chief Wong and the SOU officers for taking the time to come out to St. Vincent's and give them the trespass notices and help work with the parish as far as making it a more safe area. I would like to invite George to come out there and do a cleanup with us. There's condoms out there where kids walk. There's garbage and foil and needles out there where kids walk and go back and forth to school. I think everyone deserves a safe place. I think that there's particular members in the community that feel that they have a right to behave a certain way, that they don't have any obligation to anyone else but themselves. And I think that that's, that leads to problems. I think until you can start taking care of yourself and picking yourself up, you need some kind of guidance. You need some support. You need some, you need, you know, you need to have that hard talk with them and ask them why they're doing this and what, what's the longevity in it. I'm really glad to hear Stand Up's name coming from several different people because apparently, Federal Way, Stand Up Federal Way is a force to be reckoned with, I guess. I mean, I guess we're just out there doing, you know, making the city safe. We're gonna have a booth at the Red, White, and Blues Festival. And I always like to tell a story about how Stand Up Federal Way saved Federal Way. You know, how we, how we got together, started cleaning up issues, bringing things to the attention. You know, that we were, we weren't gonna just sit back and let people live in the woods and rob houses and cars and, and assault people. You know, this is a community. This is all of our community. And when it comes to housing, we, we all need housing, but you know, I'd love to live in a Taj Mahal. You know, do I even have public housing for Taj Mahal if I want to live there? I mean, if you're gonna do public housing and housing, let's think about the, the, the end game, which is taxes. Are we gonna get property taxes? We know DevCo doesn't pay property taxes. You know, we, we know what Federal Way is burdened with the low-income housing market. We know that this is King County's plan. And it, and it's time that we said, you know, enough's enough. And we really need, we deserve more. We really deserve more than, than what our elected officials are giving us. And I really want to invite George to come and do a cleanup with us so he can see what we're talking about and how traumatized these kids are. So I want to thank the council for their time, and I hope to see you at the next cleanup. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, do we have any other pink sheets or is there anybody online?
No, Mayor, I don't have anyone else signed up.
Okay. Well, that concludes public comment. Thank you so much for your, for coming tonight and for providing public comment. It is so important to hear from the folks that we work for. Okay, now we're on to item number six, presentations. Proclamation for Juneteenth, which is tomorrow. On June 19th, 2024, Councilmember Tran will be providing, will, will be presenting the proclamation to Diversity Chair, Saudiya Abdullah.
Thank you, Mayor. At this point, I would like to invite Chairwoman of Diversity, Saudiya Abdullah, to the podium, please. Whereas our nation would conceive on July 4th, 1776, with the Declaration of Independence boldly and historically proclaiming, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness." And whereas on New Year's Day, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, which make the permanent abolition of slavery and provided the legal framework for the emancipation of nearly 4 million enslaved peoples at the Union Army's advance. And whereas on June 19, 1865, Major General Golden Grantur announced in Gaberton, Texas, the end of both Civil War and slavery. And thus Texans began the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866 with community events such as parades, cookouts, prayer, gatherings, musical performances, and historical cultural readings. And whereas, Juneteenth is a day held in high importance for our African-American brothers and sisters, and is known as America's Second Independent Day. And in Federal Way, we proudly celebrate our annual Juneteenth flag-raising ceremony and other celebrations. Now, therefore, we, the undersigned Mayor and City Council members of the city of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, June 19, 2024, as Juneteenth in Federal Way and encourage our community to celebrate this important holiday with friends and families, remembering the sacrifices of so many who have come before to ensure all Americans remain free. Sign this 18 days of June 2024.
I would like to say, a point of personal privilege, that Trinise Rock, she was in the room. She's in the back of the room. Can you stand up for me for a second? Trinise and her daughter literally sat in the mayor's office, and I'm sure called many of you that are in the council, about making sure that Juneteenth is recognized in our city. And so, as much as this proclamation, as I accepted on behalf of the Diversity Commission, I really want us to make sure that we acknowledge the Rogers family for teaching their children because it was a child that, that got this done in Federal Way. So thank you very much, Trinise.
All right, thank you, Saudiya. Okay, items, oh, actually, when we ended public comment, Chief, can you, we need to go back to the public comment. I believe it was Ms. Staub who had mentioned loud mufflers, racing, noise like that. Do we have an emphasis for, you know, I hear that as well, not being too far off First Avenue. Do we have officers in our traffic unit that focus on, you know, holding, you know, whether it's on Dash Point Road or First Avenue, trying to address loud noises with cars?
She brought up two issues. I wanted to share that starting June 30th to July 5th, we will have special fireworks emphasis patrol. We're signing up officers for that detail. So we will have high emphasis in that starting here soon. Second, on the, the car meets, the car gatherings, we're constantly gathering information about where the groups are gathering on social media. So we have gathering intel with that. And when we do, we always contact the organizer, discourage them from meeting in Federal Way. And then we hire additional officers for emphasis patrols. And we have zero tolerance. And one of the violations that we do write for is modified exhaust system. So we are very proactive with that. We've been pretty successful keeping those groups from coming to Federal Way. And the word is that we will take enforcement and also go after the organizer for violating state law. So it's ongoing effort. And then, of course, our patrol officers, traffic unit, you know, we're enforcing on an ongoing basis as well, Mayor.
And what are we gonna do about July 4th coming up? Letting people know, reminding them that it's illegal and also with regard to enforcement?
Yeah, we're already informing the community through social media. So we posted that. We will work with the local newspaper. We will get the word out by other means to educate our public not to do fireworks. That fireworks is illegal in Federal Way, and it carries a $300 fine.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Okay, now, we've got council committee and regional committee reports. Parks, Recreation, Human Services Committee, that is Councilmember Walsh.
Yes, our, our committee met last Tuesday, June 11th, and discussed another number of items. On the consent agenda today, items E and F came out of that. And also, we discussed at length the, the public hearing on item 9B, the updated First Amendment to the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. We discussed that. And there will be a, a public hearing on that and, and a, a vote on it. So anyway, our next meeting will be July 9th, right here.
All right, thank you.
Five o'clock.
I thank Councilmember Land Use and Transportation Committee, LUTC. Councilmember Doby.
Yes, our next meeting will be July 1st on a Monday. And we'll have some discussions about some zoning issues or zoning questions about middle housing and different things we could do to encourage more housing in Federal Way affordable. And that's my report.
All right, thank you very much. Finance, Economic Development, and Regional Affairs Committee, otherwise known as FedRAC, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting is at 5:00 p.m. on June 25th in this room.
Great, thank you very much. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, LTAC, Councilmember Asif Adosson.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Tuesday, I reviewed the TEG application from Southwest Air Space Alliance. And the committee has a recommendation that's going to Council. And we may end up skipping the month of July, August, and September, October, November.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, our regional committees report. Councilmember Honda.
Hi, greetings from Vancouver, where it's beautiful down here. I just want to say, I was on the Arts Commission when we started the judges' art contest. And that was about 12, 11 or 12 years ago. So I'm glad it's still going and that we still have students who are participating and the judges still participating. It's a great program. Today was our skateboard meeting. And Sound Transit had a great presentation on the Federal Way link. And then Metro had a presentation on the South Link connections. Both of those have a lot to do with Federal Way. And I would like to ask that that goes on to an LUTC committee meeting or a council meeting? The information was very specific to Federal Way. And I'm sure that our council and our people in the city would like to hear what's going on. June 27th will be a Sound Transit board meeting, and they will most likely be selecting the site for the maintenance yard. There is still time for public input, but we do know that it's most likely gonna be here in Federal Way. I attended the PIC meeting last week, and Saturday was Flag Day, and I just, I'd like to talk a little bit about that. It was the 35th Annual Flag Day. And we had speakers that spoke. Bob Daragans gave a couple poems. Becca Martin talked about the Greater Chamber. She's the greater, the CEO of the Greater Chamber of Commerce at Federal Way, and talked about Federal Way and some great things here. We had Jane Hughes, who talked about Gold Star Families of Washington. She lost a daughter who was a service member. We had veteran Mary McKellen Aronon, who was a veteran back in the 60s. She was in the Army, and that was really interesting. The Federal Way Corral sang for us. But I'd like to thank the Federal Way VFW Post 2886. They were present, excuse me, they were present. And I'd like to thank the Federal Way Lions for their ongoing support. And of course, the Warhouser King County staff with Mike Dunwoodie. They are amazing, and we are so fortunate that they are in our city. And of course, my fellow Strathemus Club members. This was our 35th Flag Day program, and we will be doing it again next year. On Saturday, there was a, excuse me, Sunday, Father's Day, there was a concert at The Path. It was the Washington Chamber Ensemble, and it was almost sold out. It was a very good performance, and it's, it makes me happy to see almost every seat in The Path filled. And I'd like to congratulate our newest Eagle here in Federal Way. From Troop 307, Caleb Hilden became an Eagle. His Court of Honor was on Saturday. And congratulations to our newest Eagle here, Eagle Scout here in Federal Way. Thank you.
All right, Council President report.
We had our meeting with the Joint Commission, a meeting of the Joint Commissions, representative from each commission to discuss joint issues and what to do moving forward. Some people would like to have a Joint Commission meeting publicly. It's, it's a difficult discussion to have because of our public records notice and how to have a public meeting when we have elected officials. And so, without getting into all of the particulars, we decided at this point to have one Joint Commission meeting, beginning, per year so far, beginning this, within the next two months, having a meeting where all of the commissioners come together. And we have sort of a congratulatory meeting and getting everybody together so they can see each other and talk to each other at a special meeting at the city council and have cake. So if you don't want to hear about the commissions, just come in for the cake. But in the Arts Commission would like to discuss how to meet with Diversity Commission. And so I'll be meeting further with Karen Brigado with the Arts Commission on that topic. And so there'll be more to come in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Now, moving on to item eight, on the consent agenda. These items have been approved at the committee level, and they can all be passed at once. After I read them, I'll ask the council members if they would want to pull an item for separate consideration. All right, item A, minutes for the June 4th, 2024 regular meeting. Item B, initiation of development agreement for the commons. C, authorization to enter an inter-local agreement with HGAC by. D, purchase of hard surface cleaner using surface water management funds. E, resolution, Celebration Park Field 7 artificial turf funding. And E, South King County, South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, or SKEP, 2025 work plan and budget. That's F. Council, are there any items you would want pulled for separate consideration? All right, Council President Coach Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move approval of the consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the matter's passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We're on to item nine, public hearing. Item A, resolution, adopt, adoption of the 2025 to 2030 Transportation Improvement Program, or the TIP. I'll now open the public hearing. We'll have a presentation from Rick Perez, our city traffic engineer. Then we'll have public comment, and then we'll go from there. With that, Rick Perez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And let me get going here. Let's see. Let's see. Okay, I think I'm there. All right, so tonight, the policy question is should the council authorize staff to proceed with the adoption of the 2025-2030 City of Federal Way Transportation Improvement Program tonight, June 18th? So the six-year, TIP, is a six-year plan for transportation-related capital projects, which is updated annually. Projects have to be listed in order to be eligible for grants. Our TIP must be financially constrained, meaning that we have a reasonable chance of at least the first three years worth of projects have a reasonable chance of being funded, must conform to air quality requirements that are tested by Puget Sound Regional Council, and adopted after a public hearing. So prioritization criteria include basically measures of safety, weather and congestion, whether they support high occupancy vehicles and non-motorized transportation, level of community support, air quality, ease of implementation, and a benefit cost ratio calculation. Basically, a map showing the distribution of the projects listed. Projects that are coming off the list include the compact roundabout we constructed at Dashpoint Road, 47th Avenue Southwest. Stage two of the city center adaptive traffic control system. This was upgrading detection that wasn't included in Phase 1. Also on Dashpoint Road, the non-motorized improvements on Dashpoint Road from 312th to 21st, also known as the Lakota Safe Routes to School Project. So proposed new projects include on city center access Phase 2B. This is a roundabout that would be constructed at 23rd Avenue South and the extension of South 324th Street. And this is originally part of the next phase of city center access project. We're breaking that out for cost purposes because there's a good chance we can get Sound Transit to pay for it. So new project also, an overlay on South 320th Street from Highway 99 to I-5. And that will be the subject of another agenda item soon because it looks like we're going to get that funded through Puget Sound Regional Council. 332nd Street, a short extension between 13th Place South to Highway 99. That would resolve some code enforcement issues and make a nice convenient connection between here and Highway 99. Another overlay on 21st Avenue Southwest from 339th Street to 320th Street. Another upcoming grant is Local Road Safety Plan. We are receiving through Puget Sound Regional Council a federal safety grant of $400,000 that has been approved by council already. And a streetlight infill project using the ARPA money that we've gotten and will start construction hopefully later this year. And another new project is recognizing that we have some traffic signals that if a signal pole gets knocked over, we're screwed. I mean, to be blunt, that the conduits are so old and rusted and full of wire already that we wouldn't be able to feed any new wires through. And it would be a long reconstruction period to get that signal operating again. So we're proposing a new program to replace those signals. This one here at 8th and 320th was built around 1972, and it's way past its useful life. And so we've got four of those on the 320th corridor. So those are our highest priorities for replacement. Pack Highway Trail from 288th to 272nd, continuing the bike facilities that we are constructing. Actually, we got Phase 1 out to bid right now. This would be Phase 3 of that corridor. And looks like we're going to get some design money to get going on that through Puget Sound Regional Council. So the options considered are to approve the resolution adopting the transportation improvement plan as presented, or do not forward the draft document and provide direction to staff. And the mayor's recommendation is to approve the resolution adopting it. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, Council, any questions?
I have a question.
All right, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I've been asked by some of the folks who in the streetlight project will start and if those streetlights will be up by next winter.
This coming winter, no. Next winter, probably yes. There is a supply chain issue with getting streetlight poles. And so that will be the biggest challenge is getting that many of them delivered.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dovey?
I move to close the public hearing.
All right. There's been a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion?
We make a call for public hearing, a public comment before we close the hearing.
Oh, that's right. That's right. So, sorry, can you withdraw that motion?
I'll withdraw the motion.
And we withdraw the second. All right, is there any, do we have anybody that's registered for public comment?
No, we have no one signed up, Mayor.
All right, is there anybody who'd like to issue public comment on the transportation improvement plan, TIP? All right, that being said, Councilmember Dovey.
Now I would like to move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Dovey.
Yeah, I move approval of the proposed resolution.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second to approve the proposed resolution. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Asefa Dawson.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I just had a question. Does Puget Sound Energy fund any of those projects with streetlights? Puget Sound Energy, I'm sorry, T S T.
Rick has approached the microphone. Rick?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed the question.
Could you say that again?
Does Puget Sound Energy help fund any of these light projects, streetlights?
No, the streetlight project, the infill project is funded with the federal ARPA funds. And we are beyond that. We're also paying Puget Sound Energy to convert the remaining streetlights to LED fixtures to save money in the long run.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Okay, there's been a motion, a second. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. All right, now moving on to item B, updated First Amendment to the 2023 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and we will have a presentation from Kim Backrack, the Human Services Coordinator. Kim?
Good evening, Mayor. Council President, council members. Just one moment, please, while I pull up the presentation. My name is Kim Backrack, Human Services Coordinator for the city. Tonight, I'm here to discuss with you the updated First Amendment to the 2023 Annual Action Plan. To give a little bit of an overview to those who might not know what the Annual Action Plan is, every year, the city submits an annual action plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. This action plan discusses with HUD how we plan to spend our CDBG funds. Those are funds that the federal government allocates to the city, and the city can then allocate outwards. The city takes an approach where we are a pass-through entity. We don't spend the funds within the city, but we grant those funds to agencies within the city to do the work for us. So in the 2023 Annual Action Plan, there are several projects that we proposed that have been unable to move forward. These include the multi-service centers Villa Capri Apartment Rehab. This project was unable to move forward due to a finding in the environmental review. There is potential this project could move forward in the future, but at this time, we are unable to move forward that project. Second is the city housing repairs. The city transitioned to the administration of this program to Habitat for Humanity, but did save some funding for lingering projects, and remaining funding was not used. Those projects that were lingering have since then been moved to Habitat. So Habitat will be continuing with those projects. They didn't just end. The third one is shelter. The 2021 project was to support an adult shelter in the city as the former reach out was not able to continue during the pandemic. The CDBG funds were not used in coordination with the former Red Lion funds, so they are being reallocated. So none of the funds were used for any of the shelters that the funds that were allocated, sorry, the funds that were allocated to be used towards shelter were not used at all. The proposal is that we fund the following projects. This is the recommendation from the Human Services Commission. The first one is a fusion acquisition, recommended $300,000 of funding for the acquisition of a transitional housing unit. Habitat for Humanity Minor Housing Repair Program at $100,000 to provide minor home repairs up to $5,000 to low and moderate income homeowners. Habitat for Humanity Housing Repair Program at $150,000 for housing repair program helping extremely low, low, and moderate income homeowners repair their homes to a safe condition. The fusion elevator and windows rehabilitation at $300,000 to update and repair elevator windows and to bring up to ADA compliance and energy efficiency standards. A Highline Economic Development Program at $110,000 to provide assistance to low and moderate income business owners. The African and African Community Housing and Development Small Business Support at $110,963.65, which would provide assistance to low and moderate income business owners, including mini-grants. Of those programs, the city currently funds a Habitat for Humanity Minor Home Repair, Housing Repair Program, and then also the Highline Economic Development Program. So those would be continuation of programs. The other programs would be new. And on that, we'll take any questions.
Council, any questions? Anybody online have a question? All right, do we have any public comment?
I don't have anyone signed up, Mayor, no.
Okay, anybody in the audience who has a public comment? All right, Kim, great job on the presentation. Thank you very much. Councilmember Walsh?
Yes, thank you, Kim. I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Councilmember Walsh, that's the main motion.
I move approval of the proposed amendment as presented and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Thank you again, Kim. Great job. Okay, now we're on to item 10, council business. The item A is the 2024 Asphalt Overlay Bid Award. Jeff Hune, our civil engineer, will provide a presentation.
Good evening, mayors, council members. My name is Jeff Han. I'm the civil engineer for the city of Federal Way, and I'm presenting the 2024 Asphalt Overlay Bid Award to council. The policy question is, so does the city council award the 2024 Asphalt Overlay Bid Award to... So the city council awarded 2024 Asphalt Overlay Project to the lowest responsive responsible bidder. Some background, four bids were received and opened on June 10, 2024, for the 2024 Asphalt Overlay Project. The lowest responsive responsible bidder is Lakeside Industry with a total bid amount of $5,917,068.50. And here is the map for the audit schedules. The available funding for the 2024 Asphalt Overlay Project is $5,840,783, and is comprised of the following. Carryforward from 2023, Funds 102 and 116. Solid Waste Utility Tax, Real Estate Excise Tax, Motor Vehicle Fuel Tax, Park Transfer, ADA Retrofits Transfers, and Lake Haven Water and Sewer District Transfer. The total bid received is greater than the total available funding. In order to stay within available budget, staff recommends not to award South 369. With the removal of South 369 Streets, the new estimated total project cost is $5,817,261, which includes in-house design, estimated subtotal construction costs, 10% construction contingency, and construction administration. The construction is anticipated to start on July 2024. With the option percent, two councils are. One, award the recommended schedules for the 2024 Asphalt Overlay Project to Lakeside Industries, the lowest responsive responsible bidder in the amount of $4,674,783, and approve a 10% contingency of $467,478 for a maximum contract amount of $5,142,261, and authorize the mayor to execute a contract or to reject all bids for the 2024 Asphalt Overlay Project and direct staff to rebid the project and return to committee for the action. And the mayor recommends option one.
All right, council, any questions? Councilmember Dovey, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move to award the contract for the 2024.
Oh, I'm sorry, actually, hold on. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you, sorry, I thought you saw my hand. The one item that was taken off the list, will that be on next year's list?
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
The South 369 will be forward to 2025 overlay. So it will be added to next year overlay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, we didn't see, I couldn't see the hand up. Do we have any other hands up electronically? Okay, all right, Councilmember Dovey.
Okay, we'll start over. I move to award the contract of the 2024 Asphalt Overlay Project to Lakeside Industries, Inc., the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $4,674,783.50 with a contingency of $467,478.35 for a maxing contract amount of $5,142,261.85, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, a matter passes unanimously. Great job, Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, authorization to bid median fencing property on Pacific Highway South, South 304th Street to South 308th Street. Our Public Works Director, E.J. Walsh, will provide the presentation.
Evening, Mayor, Council President, members of council. Tonight before you is the median fencing project that went to L U T C at their last meeting. There's a lot of PowerPoints open. And was advanced to the council meeting business agenda. As soon as I hide the meeting controls, I can actually see. There we go. And as part of that meeting, there was also a question from one of the council members about the school district and their thoughts on this project. So Michael Swartz with the school district. So Michael Swartz with the school district is also here tonight. So I do want to point that out for the council. So the median fencing project, it consists of installing centerline median fencing from 304th to 308th Street. The policy question is, should city council authorize staff to proceed with preparing and bidding the median fencing project on PAC Highway between 304th and 308th, and return to L U T C for, and subsequently council for authorization to award? Little bit of background, as I mentioned at the June 3 meeting, this item was moved to the business agenda of this meeting, so we are here. And to back up of how we got to that meeting, in front of the high school, there, over the years, there's been a number of serious vehicle-on-ped accidents. Most of them involved the intersections. But in the, in November of 2023, there was a, another fairly serious one involving a vehicle and a pedestrian. And subsequent to that, there was a lot of conversations between the city and the school district of what can be done to overall make that area better for students specifically, but frankly, all pedestrians. So there were a number of stakeholder meetings, and the public schools, the public works department, and our police department have been working on a broad range of ideas and implementation, everything from active enforcement by police during school hours, to what we can do from an engineering perspective, to education by the school district itself, up to the students. So we came to council after some of that stakeholder engagement with a proposal from the Transportation Improvement Board, who had reached out to us to fund very specific improvements within that, and what could we have done specifically before the start of school and the 2024, 2025 school year? So, you know, the clock's ticking to try and get some of this work done. So what was advanced was a combination of things, but on the engineering side, it included median fencing, as I mentioned. It included advisory school speed zones with flashers, upgrading the street lighting at the intersection with 308th, so changing out the fixture heads to higher wattage heads, adding what we call tattletale lights. So they're called, formerly they're called red light indicator lights for the police department to use to be able to see from, so they don't, so a police officer does not have to cross through the intersection with a red light to be able to effectively stop someone that has run the red light. And then freshening up paint MMA that's out there. So one of the things that was advanced was that median fencing. We are looking at doing it, you know, in accordance with the grant, but also doing it as cost efficiently as possible. And so the city operations staff is kind of, is working on the site preparation as part of that. And the proposal is to use the small public works contracting vehicle via the MRSC roster to fulfill that. So on a map, this is the area. It looks like it is the median between effectively the two intersections. We also have some redevelopment proposals on the east side of PAC Highway that would, I'm going to say, be a temptation for people to run from the front of the school, cross the center median, not using crosswalks if they are to develop. So that kind of dovetails right into the desire to prevent crossings at anything other than the crosswalks. So this is the fence that's in front of the former Ace Hardware as a point of reference. This is similar to what is being proposed. Ultimately, the, the actual fence will be submitted by the contractors as part of the bidding process. So stylistically, this is, this is about what we're envisioning, but the ultimate product that will be, like I said, the options will have to be submitted by the fence contractor that's actually doing installation. So generally speaking, this is what it'll look like. Specifically, it may vary it slightly. The project budget overall, we have about $250,000 allocated towards this project, a combination of transportation capital, as well as that TIB grant that I mentioned. We are, with the TIB grant, we are obligated to implement this at this point. We did, we did agree with TIB and sign paperwork that we would carry through this project. So the proposed work that we have done out there, or are proposing to do, is itemized above and matches out to the available budget. That, the mayor's recommendation was to advance this. The L U T C recommendation was also to advance this, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? All right.
Yeah, I have a question.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah. I remember when this came up in L U T C, and my question real quick is, I do know there's a grant, what is the actual city's cost going to be out of pocket for this project?
So we are proposing to use some restricted funding for the, the fence itself is covered by the TIB grant. Some of the other improvements we are covering with city money, the split is about $120 versus $128,000 total.
And then depending on how this goes, is there any interest in the city of putting these lovely fences anywhere else where a lot of jaywalking is going on?
At this point, I think this, this product is used, or this concept is used elsewhere inside the state, so we are not necessarily the first to implement it. Right now, there are no conversations to do this elsewhere in the city. You know, that being said, if this is successful, and, and, you know, the direction from council is to implement it in other areas, I, I think that is a future conversation, that if this is successful, might warrant some discussion. But right now, to answer your question directly, no, it's not being considered anywhere else.
Last question. When the fence is designed and put in place, is it going to be designed to be taken out if it turns out not to be as beneficial as we originally planned?
So is it designed to be taken out, and then I missed the second half of what you...
Yeah, sorry about that. My question was, the way this, the fence is going to be put in, is it going to be easy to remove if it turns out not to be? Was this a permanent cement in, in the ground kind of structure?
No, it's a permanent fence. So I mean, it, it could certainly be removed. The panels are modularized, so that if there's an accident, we can replace panels, not the entire fence. So you could remove it, but it, it is designed to be permanent.
Yeah, yeah, understood. My only concern on this one is it's going to be probably the looks, and then I'm really curious to know if it's going to be a huge benefit on the situation we're currently having, but I guess time will tell. Thank you, though, for your answers.
Sure.
All right, counsel, any other, any other questions? Okay, I'd like, just like to say, first of all, we have a representative from the school district here. Mike, thank you so much for being here. Very much appreciate. I saw you in the back of the room. You've been here quite some time, so thank you very much. Thank you for your partnership. The school district has been a tremendous partner in making sure that we address this. And E.J., thank you and your staff for making sure that we address this. This received regional news. I think there were a lot of students that were concerned. They've had two, at least two students in the recent memory at that exact location for various reasons. But I, I think this is, to answer your question more succinctly, Councilmember McDaniel, you know, we just, we want to make sure that students that are going either way, crossing Pacific Highway, do so because of the speeds involved, do so at that controlled intersection, at that crosswalk. So this is a ongoing effort to make sure. And in fact, actually, I think the school district is going to also be doing crossing guards and, and greater awareness as well. So it's really an all-hands-on-deck, and I appreciate the work. With that being said, Councilmember W, did you have a motion?
Yeah, I move to authorize the staff to solicit bids for the proposed medium fencing project on Pacific Highway South, South 304th to South 308th Street.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, sorry. All right, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Got me where there for a second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Councilmember Honda, are you voting? I can't hear you. You'll have to do so audibly, please.
Yes, I'm voting.
All right. Aye?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, thank you very much. The vote is unanimously. Item C, resolution, authorization to apply for Community Economic Revitalization Board Grant, or SERB. We'll have a presentation from Tanya Carter, our Economic Development Director. And I see Tanya here remotely on, via Zoom. Tanya, please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, Coach Mar, and council members. Tanya Carter, your Economic Development Director. I'm actually at a big economic development conference here in Spokane, so working really hard on getting Federal Way on the map. Tonight, this is just more of an administrative request presentation, so there is no actual PowerPoint. There is a staff report with all of the information. And the background on this is that the Economic Development Department asked for permission at the May 21 council, city council meeting, to apply for a Community Economic Revitalization Board Grant. The Economic Development Department received permission and subsequently applied for the grant, whose deadline was on May 28th, and the application was successfully accepted by CURB. However, CURB, upon reviewing the way that we approved application permission, requested that we instead provide a resolution instead of the way that we do at council. And so the request tonight is just to authorize an administrative paperwork request for a resolution to be able to submit and comply with the requirements for this CURB grant. So the question before council tonight is, should council approve the decision to pass this resolution, which is an administrative paperwork, or should the council not decide to, please give staff direction? And that is all.
All right, counsel, any questions? Councilor Tran, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the proposed resolution.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, opposed? All right, great, thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Item 11, ordinances. First reading, item A, Council Bill 880, Ordinance, City of Tacoma Department of Public Utilities, Tacoma Water Franchise. With the, there is our Deputy Public Works Director, Desiree Winkler. Desiree, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, Coach Mar, and council members. I'm Desiree Winkler, and I'm getting this presentation up. Here it goes. All right. Whoa, okay. There we go. Policy question. Should the city grant Tacoma Water a non-exclusive franchise to occupy specific rights of way for the purposes of constructing, maintaining, operating, replacing, and repairing a water distribution and transmission system within and through the city of Federal Way? Background information, Tacoma Water serves a portion of the city of Federal Way. It's primarily west of Hoyt Road. Tacoma Water also has a transmission line that runs through Federal Way. They had an existing franchise. It expired in November of 2022. This franchise proposed for a 10-year term. There are two automatic extensions for five years each. Tacoma Water will continue to provide hydrant and fire suppression system operation and maintenance, and the insurance in the franchise is consistent with city standards. Before you is a map. Again, the service area for Tacoma Water is west side of the city, west of Hoyt Road. And then there is a transmission line that runs diagonal between I-5 and going southwest down through to Tacoma. Financial impacts, the Tacoma Water paid a $5,000 deposit, which pays for our staff time for developing the franchise. They will continue to pay for right-of-way permits for doing construction work, and they will also get an annual right-of-way permit for their annual maintenance, and then we do collect utility taxes. Options considered is to adopt the proposed Tacoma Water franchise ordinance and forward it to the July 2, 2024 city council for second reading and enactment. Option two, do not adopt the proposed ordinance and provide direction staff. The mayor's recommendation is to adopt the franchise ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? All right, council members online, any questions? All right, do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor, I don't have anyone signed up.
Is there anyone here who'd like to give a public comment on this matter? All right, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 880, Ordinance, City of Tacoma Department of Public Utilities, Tacoma Water Franchise. An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, granting City of Tacoma Department of Public Utilities, Water Division, Tacoma Water, a non-exclusive franchise, to occupy rights of way of the City of Federal Way, Washington, within the specified franchise area for the purposes of constructing, maintaining, operating, replacing, and repairing a water distribution and transmission system within and through the City of Federal Way.
All right, Councilmember W.
Yes, I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the July 2, 2024 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Great job, Desiree. Thank you very much, and thank you for sticking around for two full hours. Okay, second reading and enactment, item B, Council Bill 879, Ordinance, Limited, excuse me, Ordinance, Limited Tax General Obligation Bond. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 879, Ordinance, Limited Tax General Obligation Bond, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to contracting indebtedness, providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of one or more series of not to exceed $57 million aggregate principal amount of limited tax general obligation bonds, to provide funds to pay for or reimburse the city for the cost of acquisition of land as the site for in construction, remodeling, and equipping of a joint-use operations and maintenance facility for city departments and other capital purposes, and to pay the cost of issuance of the bonds, fixing or setting parameters with respect to certain terms and covenants of the bonds, appointing the city's designated representative to approve the final terms of the sale of the bonds, and providing for other related matters.
All right, thank you very much. Councilor Tran, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second on second reading of 879. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we are at the second meeting of the year, excuse, of the month, so we'll start on council member, council position number seven, Councilmember W.
Okay. My only report is, it's been 30 days since I got my new knee, so thank you for having this meeting go fast, and I have nothing else to report.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Walsh, was that, was that fast enough? Councilmember Walsh?
Close. I, I'm anxious to get on the road to Vancouver, so I have no report.
All right, very good. Councilor Tran?
I have no reports. Safe travels.
Very good. All right, Councilmember Honda?
Oh, thank you. I just lost connection. I, I'm back now. Down here in Vancouver, I'm very excited to be going on a tour tomorrow of the Chelsea Anderson Memorial Playstation, which is an inclusive park which opened about a year ago. I'll be bringing home ideas, so thank you.
Very good. Have fun down there, over there. Okay, Councilmember McDaniel?
Yes, good evening. I have nothing to report this time.
All right, have, have a great time at the conference. We look forward to getting a report. All right, Councilmember Asefa Dawson?
And I have nothing to report, and I'm looking forward to this conference and being back.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right, council president?
Just congratulations to Stephanie for obtaining her Master Clerk certification. Good job.
Hear, hear. That's a big deal. Congratulations.
So, no reports.
Yeah, we just got that word today, so that's a big achievement. Thank you. We're very fortunate to have Stephanie as our esteemed city clerk. And thank you, staff. Thank you, council. Great job, and I think we got this done in near record time, but great job, everybody. With that, we are adjourned.